Everybody's all set. All set, we're gonna bring this meeting to order, please. What we like to do is like to start and make sure everybody's signed in on the attendance sheet so we can put that with our files. And we generally give everybody a privilege of the floor for a few minutes. We do have a lot going on tonight, so if you try to keep it brief. If anybody would like to make some comments before we start our meeting?
Fred, I'd like to thank you guys for taking all the time to work on this project. I know it's been a burden on all of you and I appreciate your work on it. In the future, I hope that the town is generous enough to lend you some professional help to help you with these types of issues. You know, we really shouldn't put that kind of a burden on you for this at all. And this, you know, eventually, we're gonna have to review our comprehensive plan. And, boy, you know, hire somebody from the county or hire some outside help, but this has really been too much of a burden placed on you and, you know, it will give everyone a sour feeling if you work too hard, particularly people who will replace you. So, thank you for all your work, I really appreciate it. I think you've done a good job, you've been patient, and thank you.
Thank you. Gary, yes.
I wanna add to that. On behalf of the concerned group that is working with you, thank you for a job really well done. Please respond to your responses if you're comfortable. A lot of good work, thank you.
Is anybody else? Yes?
I'll give a third to that. Did a good job.
Yes, Luke?
I wanna thank you guys for knowing what's like everyone else, and I just wanna mention what the importance tonight is, is why setbacks and decibel levels matter. Sound is not a simple thing to understand. And so, people have been trying to understand this for a year, and soon, you guys will make your decisions on both you and the parish and the Hopington wind advisory board or the Hopington Town Board who will make their decision. We've taken the time, we've been trying to learn, and we know that setbacks and decibel levels are key in preventing negative health impact caused by improper lighting of wind turbines. They're definitely related, and the levels of infrasound, noise, and vibration that disturb sleep and cause other health problems are brought about by many factors when you use outdoor wind turbines. So, when people tell you that they're standing right under them and they can't hear them, it's because the sound is going far out. In a research study, which I have here, infrasound and low-frequency sound tones are major problems were documented as far as 6.2 miles from the nearest wind turbine. So, when people say, "It's not gonna affect me," he could well. And there's complaints were associated with the infrasound generated as far as 4.2 miles away. Yeah, I just make sure I get this right here. Bedrock will conduct vibration, especially when the towers are drilled into it and attached to it. Topography and forests also affect the wind line movement. It can move down, it can move up, and it shows, and forest cover can either funnel it or block it. So, it's not easy to predict. Weather conditions and temperature can affect wind turbines. Cold air, warm air, inversions, unsettled or dusty air, they can all increase turbulence and noise, and there's information here about that. Electrical power output of the turbines directly related to the sound power, the noise output. This has caused many problems in other wind projects, particularly when larger turbines are used than originally used, as in Hopington, New York. There's one thing that's very worrying, one of the alternatives to the forty towers is to throw these trees at above the higher power output main plate, and so, we need to consider if they're looking at fewer turbines but bigger turbines, that bigger turbines and more power they make means the more noise they make. Since the noise emitted from wind turbines is hard to predict and control, one way to protect surrounding residents and male effects is to regulate the decibel level, where it's received, meaning the property lines. Vermont Public Service Board has recently issued a rule that sets the nighttime level of 35 dB. They've got that in there. But that solution for protection from infrasound is distance. The Vermont TFSB rule sets 10 times the total height of setbacks, or 5,000 feet for 500-foot turbines, and that's the same as Germany, where Robert told all of their tons of turbines in Germany, they were still far away. They hurt families when they set bigger setbacks. So, for this reason, we urge the residents of Parishville, Hopington, and surrounding areas to attend these meetings and support wind laws that protect our peace, quiet, and most importantly, our ability to sleep. This can be accomplished with maximum nighttime decibel levels of 35 decibels, setbacks that will be 25 on the feet, or five times the turbine height, whichever is greater and strong and working mechanism, or with penalties for failure to comply. There's all kinds of information here about the power output, other places with problems, other places with 35 maximum at nighttime, rural noise levels. So, I hope people will just look wherever these materials they want, except for the color picture. Thank you.
For the people in the back, there's no chairs up front, what I'm sitting on. Okay, no more comments.
Yes, I'd just like to follow up on what Luke was saying, and I'll just read you a short paragraph from the Maloney New Telegraph, May 23, 2017, and the headline is, "Testing a Wind Noise Block EDP Renewal." Firm Stonewall bid for outside tests. And this article relates to the wind towers in Shattigay with a number of people who've had health effects, divorced selling or moving their homes, or not sleeping in their homes, sleeping in their business. And the town board proposed hiring outside, an independent outside testing agency, and EDP Renewables basically said to the town, "It's nice that you have town laws, but we're above your town laws," and they're preventing the town from testing to see if that wind farm is in compliance with the town wind ordinance law. So, I appreciate the work you're doing, but realize that this wind company operating nearby is, once they get the consent at board and the things are in operation, is saying the local jurisdictions have no control over us.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to read a brief statement regarding another wind farm. This is Duke Energy Shirley Wind Farm, and the headline is, "It Was Declared a Health Hazard." Tonight, October 14, 2014, the Brown County Board of Health voted to declare the Shirley Wind Farm a human health hazard. The decision was based on a report of a year-long study conducted by the Enns family to document infrasound in homes within a radius of six miles of the Shirley wind turbines. The vote to declare it a human health hazard puts Duke Energy Shirley Wind Utility on the defensive to prove to the board that they are not the cause of the health complaints documented in the study and could result in a shutdown order. It is time for Illinois County Health Departments to start receiving complaints lodged based on wind turbines since a Wisconsin Health Department declared wind turbines as a health hazard and caused so many problems for families.
I had to, or I didn't want to. It's true, I think that wind turbine reds the injury to property, wildlife, or humans is almost nonexistent. There's no proof that it's otherwise when compared to tornadoes, floods, forest fires, home fires, traffic accidents, or things like that. I think that that is more relevant to our health than the turbines. You're supposed to be short, so is that short enough?
Hi, there's been a lot of discussion about the setbacks and should they be from the property lines or from the residents. And I'm here to tell you, I have a property across the road from my house. I have 50 acres that has not been developed, but that I was thinking perhaps one day some of my children would wanna develop it. If the setbacks are not from property lines, that 50 acres that I have been paying for every year will be worthless, because if the DVA level is higher than 35 at night on that property, no one is gonna wanna build there. And that's not the only on the hill property right now. So, in essence, if it is not from non-participating property lines, that's a 35 DVA and the setbacks, you are in essence killing any future growth or expansion of this town or the town of Hopington. So, I for one, if leaseholders wanna have it 400 feet from their house, that's their decision. But I am begging you, do not have it less than 2,500 feet or five times the height of the towers from a non-participating property line and have the DVA tested from that line as well. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes?
Yes, I'm Leonard Casey. I live in Ellingberg, and they told us a lot of stuff, America can bring the windmills in, and most of it not true. They tore our families apart, they tore our friends apart. Like, if I wanted to put it on your land and I had to go through his land, he would say, "Well, you gotta put it on your land, because if you don't put it on your land, then I can't get it on mine." So, in the interim, families, friends, that had been friends for 25 years, 30 years that I know of, just got tore apart. They do make a lot of noise. I live over a half mile, and I can see 20-something from my house, and I can hear them from my house. And it's not, you know, our town said they were gonna, our taxes would be cut in half. My taxes haven't got down 10 cents, and this has been two years now. And our land values, like she said, people don't wanna build there no more. We used to have a real nice views, we could see Montreal from my house. It's an eyesore, it's an industrial park, and I used to live in the city. And if I wanted industrial, live in an industrial park, I'd have stayed in the city. It's just so much that they don't tell you, and you find out later. And some people that are getting money for it, those are the ones that tolerate them a little bit better. But as far as, they tear communities apart, they ruin your views, and they definitely lower the value of your land.
What county you say you're from?
Ellingberg. When I go over on my hill, I can see 100 of them.
You signed in, too, eh?
Yes.
I too would like to thank you for all your work that you have done. At the last meeting, I left you with a slew of things to hopefully look into, I think it was page 18. I'm hoping tonight I will hear that you've looked into that and maybe changed some of that language to, if they are coming, that they give the board more control, as well as what this gentleman said about the town, they're not having control over having outside, additional outside testing done, because they're saying that what they have supersedes anything else. So, I think that language, that was on the first page that got struck out at the last minute, when Hopington decided to put in that language, that was for the very reason that this gentleman spoke about, was so that the wind company couldn't say that what they have already agreed to supersedes or an additional thing would supersede, and therefore not be able to have outside testing. So, that's why Hopington, at their last advisory meeting, put that in their law, and I noticed that in the most current draft on your website, it struck out, though, about the, any additional agreements will supersede, that's on the very first page. So, I hope you reconsider that, because that was put in at Hopington on purpose for just exactly what this gentleman was saying.
Okay, hand over there in the back.
Yeah, I'm from Hopington, and I originally from Vermont. I usually don't speak up and get involved in anything, but I sense I've gone through the wind turbines hundreds and hundreds of times on my way back home, every time. I had the plugging in my ears, but it wouldn't unpop until I got way past Ellingberg, and then my head would clear up. And I did some research online and saw that it's the inner, the low pressure, this of sound that's affecting my inner ears. And I've noticed since, you know, I've gone nowhere near all over there, that it gets worse every time I go through. Sometimes it's so bad, it feels like an earring. I mean, it's actually hurting, sometimes I've felt the pressure in my chest, and I'm not making it up, I have nothing to gain by this. Personally, I wish I was back in Vermont. But what I'm saying is, the low pressure does affect your inner ears, and I'm sure there's other problems. So, they have to be way back, because I can tell when I'm getting into the area, all of a sudden, it feels like I'm underwater, and it's like that garble. I've tried it with windows down, windows up, every type of weather you can think of. I've gone through snowstorms, I've been through there with a fog, you couldn't even see them, but you could feel them. But then, by the time I got out through, I'd get past Ellingberg, and my ears would start to pop, and I could hear again, you know, I'm hearing normally. And then, when I came back from Burlington, the same thing. And one time, it was just, I always just started talking to them before I came in. And as I said, I don't get involved in these meetings, but there is such a thing as the low-frequency sound, and I know they're loud and everything, but that is the one thing I really, really noticed with me, and I'm super sensitive to the noise, and, you know, talk to, you know, check online, everything and stuff like that, so. But there is, as I said, I've been there hundreds, I mean, hundreds of times, I've been visiting Burlington, I've been there before, seven times a day and everything like that before I got to West. So, I experienced the times when they put them up, I would start to be, I'm thinking, "What am I, on top of a mountain or something?" My ears just looked like, but then, you know, but I never, you know, attributed it to the wind turbines until, and I found out, you know, they've had that, as I was driving. And lately, I've had to go back and forth for, you know, physical therapy, and it's just been thin, it's worse and worse every time I go through there. And my ears are fine, I have no trouble hearing, I don't have, you know, I don't have an earring name, nothing like that. I've never had ear problems, but it's been rare to have a low-frequency sound. So, thank you.
I kinda, I'm all for renewable energy and popular renewable energy, but what I despise about politicians and all of them, is that if you're in a rural community, it's what neighbor gets neighbor, setting their standard of what we have to have for renewable energy by certain end, by a certain date, let them put them down there in the city, let them just dump their suburbs, eliminate the transmission lines and all that, all that thing to hit the power down to those folks. Farther, we're already doing our part up here, we got all our rivers all damped up, providing hydropower. That's just how the politicians, go back, you put your stuff where you want it, they're down there, and have the governor put one in his backyard, and all the rest is over there.
Okay. Anybody else? Hopefully, there's somebody else. We do have some kids who hopefully know more about this than me, I'm sure they know a lot more about this than me. And they literally gave a presentation tonight, they've had several presentations in the past from this CCRP group and this other group, the North Country for a Better Future, has asked her equal time. So, Scott, would you like to?
Sure, thank you. And I'd like to, of course, thank you all for all the hard work that you've done. I agree with everything that's been said here, it's a tough, tough job, there's a lot to know, and I hope that tonight and what we presented and what we talked about helps everybody.
I ain't hearing what he's saying.
Again, Scott McDonald from Abbeville Renewables, and thank you all for all the hard work you've done. I echo everything that you've heard here, it is important, we very appreciate that. We've hired two internationally recognized experts that have helped us in sound and health with the design of our wind turbines here in Parishville and also Hopington. We have Rob O'Neil from Epsilon Associates and also Dr. Chris Olson of Health Management. Both of these gentlemen have been involved in numerous hearings and court rebutals along the idea of testifying along these topics, and both are recognized as independent experts in that field. So, what we'd like to do is start out with Rob, he's going to present on sound, and then we're gonna move to Chris, who will present on health.
And can, are we gonna be able to ask some questions?
That's up to...
I think we need to, yes.
I'd like to give these people the courtesy of, we've been listening to them and not interrupt them. After that, I'm sure we're gonna have questions, and like I said, we work, and these decisions are based on facts, so it's a good time to ask these questions, okay? After the presentation, so if you give them courtesy of, give them their presentation, they have to concentrate, I don't wanna send them off track.
Fine, thanks.
I don't know if you wanna, if those lights, maybe one little light might help, might be a little tough to see the screen, if that's possible. He's right here, maybe?
There we go. All right, I'll speak up and I have a microphone, hopefully people can hear me. Again, my name is Rob O'Neil from Epsilon Associates. Thank you to the board and other town officials for allowing us a chance to come and hopefully just share some of what we know, our experience between sound and health, and how that can apply to wind turbines. As Scott said, I wanna talk about sound, I've got, as you can probably tell from the gray hair here, I've got a lot of years' experience doing this, 30 years of doing community sound, the last 13 specifically dealing with wind turbines and how sound of the wind turbines goes. I have a couple of national certifications on board certified by the Institute of Bones Control Engineers, and I also am certified by the American Eurology Society, the AMS in eurology. I testified before, a lot of experience doing this. This, I spent a lot of, it's not to show necessarily what we do, but the point is, I spent a lot of hours, days, weeks, over the last 13 years at operating wind turbines, so I really feel like I do understand sound, how it operates, how it works. And I'll try to break some of that experience to bear tonight, I'm gonna talk about just a quick sound, 101, I don't wanna bore people too much with that, just a couple of basic things about sound, then talk a little bit about monitoring, how to measure sound, about modeling, how we try to predict the sound. I'll touch on low-frequency and infrasound, that's off of a topic, questions come about that, and then finish off with some noise design goals. Sound is just the movement of air, it's sound waves going through the air, it's vibration of air. We measure sound with a sound pressure level, our sound meters pick that up on a little microphone, has a diaphragm, we're measuring sound pressure. That's about as detailed as I wanna get on that. The human ear hears a wide variation of sound levels, very quiet and very loud, that's why we use the decibel scale to random. For example, the conversation in this room right now, if I had my sound meter, you know, by the laptop there, general conversation before the meeting started right now is probably around 60 decibels, just perspective. Decibel addition, again, because it's logarithmic, you know, if you take a source of sound that's 30 decibels, and choose a second source of sound that's also 30 decibels, it's not 60 decibels, it's that logarithmic math, so 30 plus 30 is 33 decibels, this hypothetical example shows you here. That's taken for a second. On the other hand, if you have a source of sound that's 30, and a second source of sound that's 40 or more, the higher source of sound will then predominate. 30 plus 40 is not 70, 30 plus 40 is essentially 40, it's 40.1, something like that, it basically rounds to 40, so the louder source will predominate or dominate. We have two sources that vary by 10 decibels or more, against basic decimal logarithmic math. But it's an important concept, that sometimes people do get confused, and they think of, you know, but if it's, you know, 40 today, and you're gonna bring a new sound in, like a turbine that's 40 decibels, now it's gonna be 80 decibels, that's not true. This graph here is just, there's a lot of detail here, but the point is, sound is composed of, as I said, vibrations of the air, and they can vibrate at different frequencies we have, you know, all the way from infrasound, low frequency, middle and high frequencies. This chart here is a chart of one-third octave bands, because by definition, the sound waves are different frequencies and different octave bands, from that low bass you might have in your stereo to the higher frequencies. We hear best in the middle frequencies here, around 1,000 hertz. I'll show you another slide about that. I'll talk more about infrasound, low frequency in a few more slides. But this, the other point of this graph is the size of a scale here, you see zero to 120 decibels. The lower you get in the octave bands, as you're getting to the low frequency and infrasound, the higher and higher the decibel level has to be for us to hear. We don't hear low frequencies well at all, we hear the middle and high frequencies well. We don't hear low frequencies. So, for example, to hear a sound at 10 hertz, it would have to be around 100 decibels loud in that frequency for us to, for a typical person to hear. Obviously, there's a little play on either side of that, but the point is, to hear it, it's gotta be very loud at those frequencies.
Can you see on the other side of that, so we can see it back here, this whole side probably can't see that chart.
Is that okay with you folks? Okay, sure. Sorry about that. So, this graph here is similar in terms of the x-axis, again, it's showing the frequency on the bottom of here, again, high frequency here, middle frequency, here's 1,000 hertz here, and then 10 hertz down here, so kind of getting to low frequency and infrasound that we're dealing with. What we hear talked about a lot is A-weighted, you know, 35 DVA, 40 DVA, 45 DVA, and that A-weighted, the DVA, is the A-weighted filter, that's set by a standard, this is a national, international standard that everybody uses, all the equipment's used, there's no deviation from this, this is an A-weighted filter, if you will. So, the point of this is that we hear very well at 1,000 hertz, and these frequencies up here, so there's really, there's no adjustment, there's zero adjustment there for the sound level, you measure 1,000 hertz, that is as is. We don't hear so long the lower frequencies, so that's why the filter drops off, so, you know, by the time you get to 10 hertz, you're not gonna hear anything down there. Our ears don't hear that well at all, that's the point of this filter. Again, I'm not gonna get into too much more than that, but broad concepts here, we don't hear low frequencies, we hear middle frequencies, and that's why the A-weighted scale has been universally adopted to describe sound to people, sound levels. Switching to actually measuring sound, there's a couple of photographs from some fieldwork we've done over the years. We measure sound, there's a couple of different instruments that we We measure sounds, a couple of different instruments that we use. This is one of them right here, this is a Norsonic. You put a windscreen on it to reduce the sound of the wind itself over the microphone. And these, again, these instruments are very sophisticated. They measure, the microphone, they measure whatever sound it picks up. They'll discriminate, measures everything. It measures the A-weighted, the infrasound, the low frequency, all the different frequencies are measured. And when we do work, especially for any wind project, we also measure the wind down at ground level, basically the same height as the microphone, more or less. Because the wind and the wind speed is very important, understanding sound levels. As the wind speed of the ground increases, then the sound level also increases. So we use that pretty routinely for our measurements. What I'm showing you here is, it wasn't done by me, it was done, it's in one of the reference books, but it's a pretty fair example, I think, of what you're going to find in a rural agricultural type of community. So this is a two-week measurement period. So this x-axis on the bottom spans two weeks. And the y-axis over there are the decibel levels from zero to 70 decibels. These are what's called the L90, which is basically the ambient background. That's the sound levels that are basically filtered out all those sort of intermediate events. This is sort of the steady state quietest background. And the takeaway from this is, there's a range here of about 17 decibels to 54 decibels of the quietest levels in a community over about two weeks. But the sound changes all the time. It's not a steady number unless you haven't put your meter, you know, next to a compressor and it's windy for 24 hours a day. That aside, if you're taking typical community measurements, you're going to see a variation something like this. It's going to vary up and down. And the other piece there is the wind speed. So the consultant did this, plotted the wind speed. That is ground level wind speed over in this axis here. And not surprisingly, when it's really windy, it can be really noisy. Not always necessarily, but you can have sound levels that allow from other sources as well. But there's a pretty decent correlation between the ground level wind speed and sound levels. Even the quietest sound levels can be over 50 decibels in a rural agricultural community.
Where is that from?
I don't know where it was taken. I got it from a reference book. All it says is it's a rural community. All right. Predicting the sound levels, how do people do that? So there is a, I've highlighted here in kind of bullet form some of the key elements of the sound prediction process. You want to start with some type of standard. What's often, mostly used is the ISO 9613 propagation standard that has a set of rules and equations in there to basically take sound from source and calculate that out into the community. And as part of that, of course, you need the project layout. You need to know where the wind turbines are, you need to know where the homes are. So all that stuff goes in from GIS information, you put that into a model. Terrain data, which is a terrain, you put that into the model, they can incorporate elevation. What's routinely done is you're going to, this is really for kind of understanding the short-term worst-case sound levels. You're going to take the information from the sound level manufacturer, whether it's GE or Vestas or any of the turbine makers, they provide by standard, they provide some data sheets of sound levels as a function of wind speed. It's not sound power, but it's basically sound pressure. And that's from cutting wind speed, which is usually around three or four meters per second, up to cut-out wind speed, which is usually around 25 meters per second. And the sound levels will, sound levels will increase with wind speed up to a certain point, usually around maybe nine or 10 meters per second. But then after that, even when the winds continue to increase, the sound levels from the turbines per se do not increase anymore. That curve flattens out. That's been proven over and again and go on. So we take the maximum sound level, whatever that worst case is, we take that and we assume that every turbine is emitting that at the same time. Obviously, the, whatever the turbine height is, that's put into the model. Meteorological conditions go in. What's typically used is temperature and relative humidity conditions that absorb the least amount of sound, therefore will generate the relatively highest sound level, conservative assumption. The 9613 standard assumes a moderate ground level inversion already exists. So it's an inversion force over the temperature. Gets warmer as you go up, so that helps to refract and propagate the sound downward. Obviously, sound drops off with distance. And the other takeaway is that in this standard, the wind is always blowing from the turbine to wherever your calculation point is, a whole church, school, whatever. I'll show you a graph of that. So this is kind of, these are a lot of your inputs to the model. This graph here shows an example of what typical model output will look like. This is for a project of many years ago. But you can see here, you've got your turbine arrays in the pink dots and the blue squares, it's probably tough to see in the back, but these blue squares represent homes. And then you've got your color contours at different decibel levels. You're going to have a map, something like this, which is going to show you from a contour perspective, what you can expect for worst-case sound levels. And then there'll also be, typically the model will produce output at every one of those specific points. Every one of these blue squares will produce the sound levels as well. These two graphs kind of zoom in, different project, but it shows you, if you're just looking at a single wind turbine, it's sort of like you're dropping a pebble in the pond. Because the model assumes that the wind is blowing in every single direction uniformly, even though that's a physical impossibility, that's why all the circles are uniform, it's blowing outward uniformly, worst case. Once you start putting a bunch of turbines, you know, in some kind of array or alignment, then that still happens, but as you get further away, now the contributions from each turbine are added together and you no longer have quite that concentric circle pattern. But each turbine is putting out the maximum sound power level and it's all uniformly radiating outward. So just two very simplistic examples of how the propagation modeling works. And those will give you the short-term, relatively short-term worst-case sound levels. The second type of analysis that's becoming required, especially here in New York State, is what would a long-term analysis look like? In other words, what if you looked at the conditions over a year? So like, the big thing is, what is the wind speed at hub height over the course of the year? Again, this is not for this particular site or area even. This is another older example from a sample site. But this shows you, there's 8,760 hours in a year. So there's 8,760 wind speeds here at a hub height. This was 100, 110 meters above the ground. So the point, the takeaway from this message is, here's wind speed from zero up to 18 meters per second and the wind speed varies up and down, up and down over the course of the year. Not surprising, right? I'm not real news to anybody, but it's not, it's not blowing at 20 meters per second every day, every hour of the year. So again, this is another hypothetical example, but if you had 8,760 hours from January 1st to December 31st here, and you took that wind speed and you match it up with the sound power level from the turbine manufacturer, because we know what the sound levels are from the turbine at every different wind speed, you can then kind of come up with a graph similar to this, where, you know, obviously there's hours during the year where the winds blow the cutting speed, so the turbines don't operate. So the sound level's zero from the turbines. That's what this line is here. But the rest of the time, sound levels are going to vary. They're going to vary. You kind of see where they sort of center in at this value here, but there's going to be some ups and downs over the course of the year. And those short-term modeling results, I was talking about in the previous couple of slides, those are going to be these numbers up here, the highest numbers. Those are the worst-case short-term numbers. Over the course of the year, though, again, the takeaway from this is your sound level's going to vary. They're going to be up, they're going to be down, they're not going to be higher than this number here. You can see, they're going to vary by as much as 20 decibels for the turbines. This question we often get is, you know, how accurate are the models? You know, so they hear that the comments, that they're no good. That's not true. Like any model, any tool, this model's a diagnostic tool. It gives you, you know, you take the best information you can, you put it in, make some reasonably conservative assumptions, and out of that, you're going to get, you're going to get some predictions. And what we've seen over the years in research and papers, as long as you assume the worst-case conditions, when we go out and do post-construction monitoring after the fact, if we can get those conditions to occur, which is not always easy, because you remember those bullet points in the floor, I need all those things to occur on the same couple of nights that I'm out there, then we found that the models do a pretty good job. I'll show you an example. They seem to be either at or below what we actually predicted. This is a paper I presented at a National Noise Conference in 2014 where high shear, this is a question that comes up, what shear is, wind shear, excuse me, is how the wind speed varies with height. So wind shear means, what's the wind speed down at the ground versus what's the wind speed up at the turbine hub height? Okay, those are always, almost always two different numbers. So under high wind shear, that's your worst-case condition. So the winds are relatively light at the ground, maybe two or three meters per second, but maybe they're nine meters up at the hub height, so you've got the maximum sound levels. So I did some modeling, some measurements for a product, I wrote up the results in this paper. And what I found was, at the couple of closest locations, so the wind industry started in Europe, so they always do things in meters, so apologize for the metrics, but 564 meters is about 1,750, 1,800 feet, something like that. So what I modeled at these two locations were 43 and 41 for the short-term worst-case. What I measured out in the field, total sound was about 41 and 39. I had the turbine shut down, so I get the background, so the sound levels without the turbines, that's what these numbers are. So you subtract the background from the total and you come up with the turbine-only numbers, and that's the number I wanted compared to what I modeled. So turbine-only was 40, I modeled 43. Turbine-only was 38.3, I modeled 41. Again, this was, this was a case where these were three-megawatt turbines, you know, good-sized turbines, 100-meter hub height, putting out their absolute maximum power, 3,000 kilowatts or three megalots under strong wind shear conditions. I had very light winds at grounds, I knew I had very little sound from the wind itself. So I feel very good about these data, they're very solid data. There was a research study funded by the Massachusetts Green Energy Center a couple of years ago. It's called the Massachusetts Study on Wind Turbine Acoustics. It's a publicly available document. You can Google it and you'll find it. We are one of the participating organizations that did that. A lot of, a lot of actual monitoring of wind turbines, some modeling went on, a lot of meteorological data were collected. 145 million records of data. It was unbelievable. Again, the point of this was the same thing, that the modeling showed, sorry, the monitoring showed the modeling does a good job and used the right assumptions. Low frequency and infrasound. As you can remember from the graph I showed you earlier, you know, low frequency infrasound is just, is a part of the sound spectrum. Low frequency is defined as 20 hertz to 200 hertz. Infrasound is below 20 hertz, okay? There's no regulatory limits, there are, or guidelines. Here in New York State, it will be looked at, it will be actually looked at as part of the Article Pen Process. What I showed you before, infrasound is not audible. Nobody disputes that. As you saw from that graph, it's got to be around 100 decibels or higher for us to hear. There's been some discussion whether people can feel it or not perhaps, but you can't hear it. And low frequency, once you get above, listen, low frequency is between 20 and 200, at around 50, 60 decibels, you can start to hear low frequency. And that's not disputed either. There are many, ANC is American National Standards Institute, these national standards that are out there, to look at low frequency infrasound, try to put it in context, for perceptual vibration and rattle, criteria in the bedroom and annoyance. So we looked at all these things, and they're going to be looked at again as part of this process. Low frequency and infrasound, sure, wind turbines naked? Absolutely, wind turbines definitely emit low frequency and infrasound, as does any mechanical piece of equipment. You know, I measured the infrasound in this room before the meeting started, the levels below 10 hertz from a range of 50 to 60 decibels in the room, you know, just from us, activity Couple more research projects here where we were commissioned to do, because this question's been coming up, we did a detailed study of measurements of low frequency infrasound. We compared them to someone's criteria I just mentioned. This is a peer-reviewed publication from 2011 in the Noise Control Engineering Journal. I'm sure everyone has that on their coffee table for bedtime reading, will put you right to sleep. But that research was published in that document and that's available. Again, low frequency infrasound, does it exist? Absolutely. Does it exist at a levels that are harmful? No. This graph here is your typical room air conditioner. Again, this line here is the demarcation between low frequency from 20 to 200 and then infrasound is below 20 hertz. Your air conditioner puts out infrasound at low frequency. This right here is the audibility curve. You start to hear a little bit once it gets into this range of low frequency. We don't hear it below here. Shall we wrap up with two more slides? Noise design goals. This document here is the World Health Organization Guidelines for Community Noise issued in 200, sorry, 1999. This one on the right is also a WHO Night Noise Guidelines for Europe issued in 2009. Neither one of these was developed for wind turbines, but they were developed for looking at sleep disturbance. And so there are some independent guidelines in here. The short-term number here for night time is 45 decibels to prevent sleep disturbance, that's 45 outside, short-term. And then the 2009 WHO report has a recommendation of 40 decibels over the course of a year at night. So if you think about that graph I showed you a few slides ago, the sound levels plotted over the course of the year, you look at it, what is it every night of the year? Are you at 40 decibels or below? And that's their guideline over the course of the year. And this basically summarizes them. WHO, 1999, just again, the short-term guideline of 45 to prevent sleep disturbance. Long-term, outside, also to prevent sleep disturbance and limit annoyance from sounds. And this last one is a key. The idea is, for any sound ordinance or regulation that you might be considering or that any community has, there needs to be some kind of a balance, obviously. Making something inaudible is not a reasonable goal. There's no sound, any type of farm equipment is going to be audible. Any, you know, air, there's a lot of sources of sound that are audible. So inaudibility is not a realistic goal, and there's no noise ordinances I'm aware of that make that a goal. So there's going to be some balance between having some sound that's audible, whether it's wind turbines or anything, versus preventing people from being disturbed at night, and you want them to get a good night's sleep. And what we've seen is that these numbers here strike that balance, 45, at a home. So with that, that is my last slide, so I'm going to wrap up. If you have any questions, I'll turn it right over to Chris.
Well, Scott's getting it all set up. Thank you very much, Mr. Board, for having me here tonight to talk to you. My name's Chris Olson. I have PhD in environmental health. I mean, so I come to work every day, I was looking at the renewable energy side for a bit aside. I do things, air quality assessments, weather standards for emissions from power facilities, contaminated sites, those type of issues, making sure protection of public health is being looked into through that. And about almost 10 years ago now, I actually got a phone call asking about wind turbines and health. And, you know, they needed a section on wind turbines and health for an application that was actually in Ontario. And I said, well, they don't emit anything, it can't be an issue here. And then that's led to 10 years of research and doing a lot of work like this and various community meetings. So just by way of background, I am a private consultant, so I have my own consulting company. I do work for various wind developers. I've also worked for the state of Vermont, the Public Services Department there. I've also worked for the state of Vermont, the Public Services Department there, in siting and wind energy development. Worked a lot in various states, right across the US. I've appeared at a number of planning board meetings like this, on wind ordinances and the like, and everything right up and through court cases. So many state hearings and the like. And the research that I, and you'll see a number of other names here, these are other colleagues that have worked with me over the years, is we've been doing research on what is appropriate sound level or setting guideline for wind turbines. You certainly can't put these things too close to people's homes. Now, I recognize that you guys heard from Steve Ambrose, I believe about a month ago or so. Everything I tell you tonight, Steve and I have two very different opinions. So I don't envy you as board members, right? You got, you, you know, you get very two different, opposite opinions on this issue, depending who you talk to. So what I'm gonna walk you through today is the science behind what we believe a proper siting guideline is, what a proper sound level is, what a proper setback distance is. So I'm gonna walk you through that, and then give you the sources and information for that happy answer question. So these are just the various peer-reviewed publications that I've had over the years. So if I was talking to you folks back around five years ago or so, there wasn't all that much information that was published on wind turbines, health and noise. In fact, back in two thousand and eleven, when we wrote our first review paper on this, there were more or less fifteen kind of key articles. In the, in the last five, six years, there's been a lot of study around the world, a lot of study here, a lot of study in Canada, and a study in Australia, some study here in the US as well, of what constitutes properly siting wind project, health impacts, what we have to do to avoid. So we now have over eighty papers, somewhere between eighty and a hundred papers now. And not all those papers are created equal. You gotta take that weight of scientific evidence, you gotta take all those papers, read through them. Like Rob said, you don't spend time reading to try to get yourself to sleep. And then look at that evidence collectively as a whole, as to what then makes sense in order to protect public health. So what are the concerns? I mean, you folks have heard them, right? The audible noise, the noise we can hear Rob walked through, the low-frequency noise, infrasound, shadow flicker, EMF from the lines, ice throw, blade failure. What Scott asked me to talk to you folks about today is mostly stick to the noise side. We could talk a little bit about ice throw. So I don't have slides on the others, but, you know, certainly if we, if you want to later on, we can talk about this. So where do the questions on health impacts come from? I mean, you folks have heard a number of these different terms and the like. The wind turbine syndrome, coined by Dr. Nina Pierpont in her self-published book. Fibroacoustic disease is another one that often comes up as a potential issue, and this is where the low-frequency infrasound and claims about potential health effects there. The challenge with this is, just like everything else on the internet, it doesn't necessarily make it the case. So when, you know, don't just have to trust me. I'm gonna take you through some of the other government agency reviews, some of the other independent reviews that have been done. If we look at, for example, wind turbine syndrome, if we look at fibroacoustic disease, these things have been actually adjudicated in a number of hearings across North America, actually around the world. There's been a number of reviews done. And in two thousand and twelve, Massachusetts Department of Health and Department of Environment commissioned their own independent study. So they had professors from Harvard who led up the review panel, Boston, MIT, and the like, and they had this international, or, or sorry, a, a more or less Massachusetts-based group of experts, academics, looking at this issue. And this is a quote from the executive summary of their report. That is, there's no evidence for set of health effects from exposure to wind turbines that could be categorized as wind turbine syndrome. So does that mean we don't have to worry about wind turbines at all and where we place them? No, it doesn't. Noise is an environmental contaminant, defined by the EPA as an environmental contaminant, just like arsenic, just like, you know, some of the emissions from coal-fired plants, it is a pollutant, that's why we regulate it, okay? And if we don't, you can get into some significant issues. Now, wind turbine, you know, usually people would make, well, you, it doesn't impact hearing. Well, you need to be very high in, you know, occupational settings, a burnage, you're farmers and that, and you're out with a tractor. You need really high levels of sound to impact your loss. So nobody would claim that wind turbines do that. This is the key window, it's the sleep. We do need to, anytime we're regulating environmental noise, whether it comes from a gas-fired plant, whether it comes from a coal plant, whether it comes from a wind turbine, the objective there is to try to make sure the levels are loaded up, that people are getting a good night's sleep. You guys all know that if you've gone through a period of time where you're not sleeping well, and this is, you know, these are projects that are gonna be up twenty, thirty years, if you're not sleeping well for a couple of days, things just start going bad. If you're not sleeping well over a long period of time, it can lead to all sorts of very negative health impacts. So that's the goal that we're looking at there, and that's why we have to properly siting these. I'm gonna spend a bit of time here on Health Canada study. The reason, yeah, and I'm from Toronto area of Canada, but the reason I'm talking to you about the Health Canada study most of the year is that it's the largest study of its kind to be done around the world. And they conducted it between two thousand and twelve, two thousand and fourteen, basically because of the same challenge to face you folks. I'm trying to, what is, what is going on with the health impact side? What is a proper set of wind burden? Okay, so they surveyed over twelve hundred people, and these people lived as close as eight hundred and twenty feet and up to seven miles from wind projects. And there's twelve wind projects, two provinces in Canada, most comprehensive. So they spent, and they spent, we're two million of my taxpayer, always doing it, which is a good thing. Okay, so what they asked, and when we do these types of sound, um, when you're asking about sound and health, often it starts and ends with self-reported questionnaires. So you give somebody a questionnaire, a detailed survey questionnaire, it takes them about two hours or so to fill out. And this is all self-reported, how they're feeling, health impacts and the like. But for the first time ever, what Health Canada did, and the, the government scientists that did this, they actually did objective measures of health, so actual physical measures of health. They did a sleep study. So they fitted out just over seven hundred of these people for a week with what's called an actimeter. Kind of looks like a Fitbit, it's a wristwatch that people wear when they're sleeping. It gives you a very detailed and accurate account of your sleeping, your awakening, how your sleep patterns are, okay? They also did hair cortisol, so for those men, not every guy in the project could, uh, in this research could actually participate, because you actually had to have hair. So you took hair samples and then you measure cortisol for that. And what is, that's an indicator of stress. So you can take hair cortisol levels, and then you can measure back what the stress was in those individuals over a period of three months or so. And they also took blood pressure readings as well. So they did all of this, and the overall conclusion to emerge is that there was no evidence of an association between wind turbine exposure and the prevalence of self-reported or those measured health effects. And this study had sound levels up to forty-six decibels. This is what Rob was talking to you about, the EVA. I know when you're looking at your ordinance and what you're trying to do for putting in rules. This study found that, again, living as close as eight hundred and twenty feet, sound levels of forty-six decibels. And it's, they, they just didn't have turbines setting closer to go over forty-six decibels. So that's why it's cut off to forty-six decibels, is that they, they did not see these health impacts. And we're gonna spend just a little bit more time, so let's talk about sleep. So this is, we're not gonna go through this fancy graph over here, other than to say, this is the, so they took all of their findings and they published them in an international scientific journal on wind turbines and health. Okay, so there's eight papers or so that have come out of this study, all been peer-reviewed by other experts. And what they, what they did was they broke up, and this is very similar for all studies on health and wind turbines. These are the various sound levels, twenty-five, twenty-five to thirty decibels, thirty to thirty-five. So they grouped them, and as I say, it went up to forty-six decibels here. What they found was, this is the sleep study, and this is, this is a direct quote from the paper. So it didn't, there's no association between, so if you're up to forty-six decibels, they weren't seeing people being woken or sleep disturbance, having wind turbines as loud as forty-six decibels in eight hundred and twenty feet in people's homes. We'll get into the, yeah, I'll give you kind of my view on what those levels should be just right now. I'm gonna tell you about what some of the others in the study. This is a study, um, you'll see, Aisha Pedersen is a famous researcher out of Europe who has probably done the most research on wind turbines and health and annoyance. And so she runs a research group, this is a backer paper from two thousand and twelve. And what this is, so they had sound levels up to fifty-four decibels. You're often gonna hear that in Europe, they have sound levels of thirty-five, or thirty, or twenty-eight. Now, I mean, a lot of the projects in Europe are actually located quite a bit closer, with higher sound levels. And this case was up to fifty-four decibels. And what this graph here, or this chart here is, is that this comes from their paper. And what they asked was, you know, again, so rural Netherlands, so let's just focus on this. Nobody cares about the people living in the city. So on the rural side, this was, how often was your sleep disturbed in a month? If you woke up more than once a month, not just to get up to go to bathroom in the middle of the night, if you were woken from a noise source. And they had seventy percent of the people living in rural Netherlands around wind projects that, I don't wake up at all. Not, not woken by anything. Twelve percent woke up because of people or animal noise. Twelve and a half percent by traffic or mechanical sounds in rural Netherlands. And six percent from the wind turbines. So is it that you're never gonna be woken up, or potentially not to be up to fifty-four decibels? You could be, but again, it's within a lower level than the other sources of noise that waking people up already in the rural Netherlands. So that's important to kind of put it into perspective. I'll spend a little bit of time on this. This is what Rob was talking to you about before the World Health Organization issued guidelines. You guys are actually not alone. The state's still trying to figure out what they wanna do here for sound guidance in New York. There's a debate going on right now at the state with the Article Ten process and the applications that are above as to what the right number is. Is it forty-five, is it fifty, is it forty? And what we've seen so far, and we know that AvanGrid's gonna have to do for this project, Rob talked to you about the modeling that he does for a nightly kind of worst-case basis, and then he's got the modeling that he has to do over the course of the year. The reason that's come up is Department of Health is actually out asked on a number of projects, including for the AvanGrid project just recently, that we look at it both ways. That we evaluate forty-five decibels on the World Health Organization guidelines on the modeling side that Rob does on a worst-case nightly average. And that comes from this document. The reason why they're asking for that is that there's good science, and you see the Health Canada, remember the Health Canada number also lined up with forty-six decibels, weren't seeing sleep disturbance around wind turbines? That's what this forty-five number. So we're gonna have to evaluate, Rob and his team are gonna have to model, to make sure that we're forty-five decibels or less. The other number that gets thrown around a lot is this forty-decibels. The challenge to this forty-decibels is it's not a nightly number, it's over the course of a whole year. So, and it's, again, not specific to turbines, it's any noise source. So what they're saying is that in order to make sure that we get good, long sleep, of course, the year, you know, not woken up once in a while, is we'd like to see a target of forty-decibels or less. Now, the challenge of that is that this forty-decibels, they actually have an entry target of fifty-five decibels, because most areas, you're not going to have a forty-decibel nightly average. Certainly not in urban areas. Yeah, I recognize this is a rural area, and the levels are gonna be lower here than they are gonna be in Albany. But that's what this forty-decibels is for. So the, the project is going to have to evaluate both of these, okay? And that's, and that's been agreed to by AvanGrid, and frankly, all the other wind developers in the state. So we're really waiting to see where the state comes down on it. So on the load, on, on the audible side, I've put you the forty-five decibels, which is what AvanGrid's looking at, designing here. And frankly, all the other developments that I know, it's being proposed for in New York. It used to be fifty decibels in New York. That thousand megawatts that you have in the north country here, the turbines that have been up for about the last ten years and coming, most of, if not all those projects were regulated at fifty decibels. Now, there's nobody that I'm aware of right now in New York that's trying to close anything more than forty-five. It seems to be consistent with forty-five. And I think if we look through the international research, that that's supported. So let's talk about the low-frequency noise and infrasound. As Rob said, are they emitted from turbines? Some wind developers somewhere back in thirty years ago, somewhere said to somebody, no, there's no such thing as infrasound. And that sparked this whole thing where people were saying, well, the wind industry doesn't emit to infrasound at low-frequency. Their idea is we're producing infrasound emitted from turbines. As Rob told you, he was measuring in the room earlier today, we're somewhere about fifty, sixty decibels, or fifty, sixty decibels on the infrasound side in the room. These are not, infrasound low-frequency noise is not emitted from turbines. So in the room right now, it's all around us. So the question is, are they emitted at levels, and would they be at people's homes, at a level that could pose health effects? I'm gonna walk you through why it suggests that that's not the case, okay? You can have health effects from low-frequency noise and infrasound, but it's just at a much higher level than what you'd ever see. And often you'll hear, well, there's no guidelines flagged, we're not, we're not regulating it. So what we have to be careful about, so the question is, is that forty-five decibels, or whatever number you've selected, has your audible sound level at people's homes? Is that protected by your wind turbines far enough back to make sure you're also protected for infrasound low-frequency noise? And I would put you at a, at a risk. So again, let's take a look at some, Rob showed you some of the research he did. In fact, the paper that Rob published on low-frequency noise, infrasound from wind turbines in Texas, was one of the first papers out there that anybody had looked at low-frequency noise, infrasound. Since that time, there've been a number of publications, I'm gonna take you through. This is a, what I'd like to do is, again, show you some of the state, the government, agency reports, not just academic reports or consulting reports. This is a big study that was just completed in Germany, where they measured low-frequency noise and infrasound, thousands and thousands of measurements around wind turbines. This looks scarier than it is, I'll walk you through this for a bit. But this is low-frequency noise and infrasound measured a thousand feet from wind turbines in Germany, okay? Similar type of models that we're talking about, you know, potentially using in this project, and there's a modern, large wind turbines. And so what the first thing is, again, so Rob was talking to you, this is the demarcation line. So everything on this side is the frequency where you get low-frequency noise. Everything on this side is infrasound. And what this band here is, this pink band, is that's the infrasound, low-frequency noise, coming from the wind turbine. They've measured, they know it's just the turbine itself, a thousand feet, okay? Knowing that we're talking about eighteen hundred feet of the gathered grids, using a design goal of eighteen hundred feet, no closer than eighteen hundred feet to, to a home in this project. So you can see that, yeah, we can measure it. So now let's put it in perspective. So this is the, this line here, that's the perception threshold, or sorry, no, wrong one. This one here is the perception threshold, so that is the kidney hearing. And you can see that we're well below a number, sort of fifty to seventy, and as you go up in the frequency, it drops a bit. But we're well below your perception threshold of the infrasound. This is an international guideline or standard that comes out of Australia, where they've suggested that this should be the level which is essentially five decibels less than the hearing threshold. For, when the wind turbine was off, okay, and then they just had a wind speed of ten meters per second, so, you know, a relatively windy day, in the exact same field where they were measuring this, that's what the green line is. So you can see that the infrasound and low-frequency noise coming from the turbine is very similar to one that's not operating on all either. The wind has a big component of infrasound low-frequency noise. For everybody who drove over tonight, who drove over in your cars with the windows up, this is the level of infrasound and low-frequency noise that you were getting as you're driving in your car, okay? It's all around us. So then the question becomes, well, where is an unacceptable level? The unacceptable level of infrasound low-frequency noise, or certainly on the infrasound side, tends to be above a hundred. And we don't get anywhere close to that with wind turbines. And so, and what happens to you above a hundred? You get migraine headaches, and all sorts of stuff, and you actually have to make, you have to, in order to get that level, you pretty much have to put somebody in a lab, and have very specialized equipment to reach that low infrasound. You just don't see it in our daily lives, okay? So there's nothing that really admits that. So I guess the take-home that I would say is that if infrasound low-frequency noise is coming from turbines, yes. Is it low enough that it doesn't pose a health impact? Yes. And you gotta remember, there's fifty thousand of these turbines or more all over the US, in areas similar to where you folks live here, as well as, you know, Canada, and in some areas of Texas, where all the areas is cattle for a hundred miles a day. But, so, you know, we have over fifty thousand here, right, in the US right now. So with siting guidelines, again, as high as fifty decibels, forty-five has become, let's see if I can not knock that over, forty-five has become a fairly common standard around. Again, this is other sources of infrasound. This was a study out of Australia. This is at about three hundred feet from the wind turbine. This is, again, somewhere around a thousand feet, so they get infrasound at seventy-two decibels. Sixty-one decibels is to get about a thousand feet, similar to what I showed you in the Germany study. And this is just other sources and common sources. So Beach House, two hundred and fifty meters from the coastline, twenty-five meters. They were at, you know, measuring infrasound from the waves at seventy-five, you know, living near roadways. We're living with infrasound low-frequency noise in our daily lives. So then to come back to that question that I said before, on the, thank you, Art, if you audible sound level at forty-five decibels is equally protective of the infrasound low-frequency noise. This is a paper that I and my colleagues published a couple of years ago now. And what we did was, we looked at all the infrasound low-frequency noise data, things that Rob had sent back, what Mr. Ambrose had measured in Palma. Took all of that data from around the world that was available, and then we compared it to other limits, and the design and setback was, and you can say that, you know, if you're setting a design goal of fifteen, or sorry, forty-five decibels and eighteen hundred feet away from people's homes, you'll be equally protected. There are other issues, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna try to look through this a little bit faster now. So this is, you know, perceptual response and reported health effects, again, Health Canada asking, were there health impacts? And again, they did not see that in this peer-reviewed study. Very quickly on ice throw, I know that Scott tells me that it has been a concern in the community. The setback distance, if you were to look at an eighteen-hundred-foot setback from somebody's home, you're well protective of ice throw and blade failure as well. This is a report that came out of a group that's now actually called DMVGL, where they modeled a scenario of, you know, a thousand feet from somebody's home being near roadway, wind turbine near roadway, and what they called the ever-present farmer in the field. wind turbine near roadway, and what they call the ever-present farmer in the field during icy conditions. And what they were looking at was, what is the probability that you'd actually be struck by ice? So they said, probability is one ice strike per 62,000 years to a home if you're 1,000 feet away, knowing we're almost double that distance here. They have one vehicle strike in 100,000 years. Clearly, traffic accident rates for ice are a lot more than that. This is basically a non-perceptible risk. And if you were an ever-present farmer in the field during the time when the icing conditions were happening, throw, the actual probability of being struck would only be one to 500 years. These are probabilities that are much less than what we deal with in our daily lives with things. This is the, you don't have to just believe me, other supporting government medical agency studies that I would put you are very much in line with what I've told you folks today. So you've got the Australians, the Canadians, Massachusetts Department of Health here, Wisconsin Siting Board, and others. So having looked at the proposed organs that you folks have put together, I would suggest that very common right now across the U.S., certainly across other developments in New York, young women in the state shouldn't necessarily land, but that 45 decibels outside the exterior, at the exterior of homes is more than sufficient to protect the residents of your community. You're not going to see the sleep impacts, we've seen that through the international studies, not just the wind turbines, World Health Organization side, and that 1,800 feet, which is the design goal to the house, right? Property lines, it's tricky. Firstly, I think the setback distances should be to homes, and really, the setback distance isn't as critical as the decimal level. And it's just 45 is something we could consider. And with that, I think that's all that Rob and I have for formal discussion, having Mr. Chair to take any questions to you or come to town.
Some of my findings recommend a daytime level and a different lower one at nighttime versus one level for both evening and night. Is that one level commonplace?
It really varies. It depends on the state, depends on the county, to be honest. Often, it'd go with a single number, but there are jurisdictions that do have a daytime and a nighttime. But I would suggest if you're looking at a daytime nighttime, then it's the 45 decibels would be the nighttime number. And daytime numbers typically, where there are jurisdictions where you have daytime ordinances or sound levels, you're usually in the 55 to 60 decimal range. So if you're looking at, you know, transport, it would be at other jurisdictions, the U.K., some of these areas, the daytime number tends to be quite a bit higher. Now, Canada, with some of the wind ordinances, depending where you look, you have numbers that are lower than that, just to justify. But again, it's based on, not so much the science, but on what is desired. But for most developers, they, whatever you say is the lower number is pretty much what's going to happen. Most developer, most wind projects don't tend to ramp up power during the day, and you basically have to curtail them at night if that's the case. So usually, the projects are designed to just meet whatever that lower standard is.
They'll design to the nighttime guideline. Typically, we see is the daytime guideline might be 10 decibels higher than nighttime. But for 24-hour day source, you're going to design to the nighttime guideline.
And maybe if I can add, because there was somewhere earlier was brought up about Vermont's recently done. In fact, Vermont had a draft standard, Public Services Board had a draft standard of 35 at night. Their final rule came out at 39 decibels at night. And they chose that, so it wasn't 35, it was 39, so it's the final rule.
And just figure outside or inside up from?
So it's outside, and so typically, there have been some jurisdictions, Vermont was one of them, where they tried to regulate the inside, which is a very bad idea. Nobody ever does that. But what we do with this, I'm going to knock this over. What we do with this outside design goal, it's actually meant to then be protected of the interior, which is open. So when you look at the World Health Organization documents, when you look at part of the transport document here in the U.S., there's a correlation of a muffling factor from outside to inside. So with windows open in summertime, or your outside noise, if it was 45, you'd be at 35. Somewhere between 30 and 35 may a little bit out of game. So that's where all of, anywhere that has a jurisdictional design for sound standard, it's to make sure that the, whatever is exterior is going to be lower inside. So you'll hear that a good nighttime noise level in your bedroom is somewhere between 30 to 35. That's a nice thing to try to target, most of the sources of effect, but that's where the design standards were outside to inside, because they're busy moving things up and down in the sound.
Second question is on the setback. Sometimes there is a set footage sample, like 2,000 feet, or five to 10 times your tower height in your area. Which one keeps more people happy?
So where we're now starting to see is turbine height side of things, is that that's more a recent phenomenon, because the towers are even bigger. So what you've seen is some jurisdictions go to a X times the height of turbines, five times, 10 times, three times, all of them happen, and that was really to account to the height side. Then there's others that, you know, very common across the Midwest, there's a 1,000 foot setback. And, you know, and in some cases, now, I don't know any developers that are kind of designed to 1,000 feet anymore. Pretty much 1,400 feet has become sort of the, sort of minimum 1,400 to 1,500 feet from residents. Which one's better? To be honest with you, I'm not as worried about the setback as I am about the sound level. Because, and what happens is, and when Rob can tell you from experience, when we look at the sound level modeling that they do, for, let's say it was designed to 45 at the home, and then you start to look at the setback distance, how far do you need to be away? Typically, these days, you're somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000 feet, depending on the project and the layout.
Right. You want to set the sound level first, because that's going to get people to have a good night's sleep. And that'll be, you know, whatever turbine height and model people are looking at, you'll have to take that into account. And the height, in my experience, is generally been more of a safety concern. In other words, the X times the tip height, you want to have that so much back from property. Usually, it's 1.1 or something like that times the tip height, in case there's a blade failure or something like that, that rare occasion that that does happen. That's more of a safety issue. The sound decibel limit is going to take care of you. Do you make everyone always happy? No. But that's going to be that balance of getting people to have a good night's sleep is a decimal.
And the other thing that maybe I just add a little bit to that too, is that typically, those setback distances, whether they be a X times the height or a distance, is to have a signal at the property wise. And because the reason that those were set in was again, very closely aligned with, and you have a target sound level. So you can, as Rob said, you set your target sound level first, and if we know that it's 45, if it was to be 45 decibels, we know that we're going to have to be at least 1,500 feet going back. But you don't set a overly aggressive setback distance in order to then negate then your sound level. Kind of match it up. But it is, some jurisdictions just have a sound level, some jurisdictions just have a distance, some have lower.
My last question is, I think that there's a big difference between a wind device at 400 foot versus 600 feet for noise generation.
I'll let Rob talk a bit about that. Surprisingly, there's not, there's a little difference. I guess there's two parts to my answer. There's the inherent sound from the unit itself, you know, sound power of the unit. You know, as the units have gotten bigger and taller, they've gotten a little bit louder, but not very much. The older manufacturers now are incorporating low-noise trailing edge technology, different things into the blades to minimize the increases in sound, even though the turbines are getting taller and there's somewhat more power, you know, the megawatt size of it is also increasing. The height of it is to sort of take it into account when you do the model. So whether it's 400 feet or 600 feet, that calculation of distance is absolutely taken into account when you do the model.
Give me a ballpark of what percent increase that might be from 400 to 600?
I'll take it, 400 now, you talk of the older turbines, probably a GE 1.5, such as the ones that went up, you know, maybe 10, 15 years ago. And those were typically 104 plus two, so a 106 decimal sound power. Ballpark. The newer ones that may be 3 megawatts, something like that, 3.2 megawatts, that could be 500, 600 feet tall, we're seeing those typically around 106 plus two. So 108, maybe two decibels louder. So are they a little bit louder? Yes, but not much.
And I think that's sort of the key, is to make sure that if you've got, that's why I don't like a setback distance, because that's the key, is that no matter how tall they are, no matter how loud that that sound pressure level coming out of the turbine height, that's where you're, you know, making sure that you've got the right number at the homes. The, you know, if you have to, if they are a little bit louder, in fact, there are some, there are some of the older ones that are louder than some of the bigger, newer ones. Right? And so, so in that case, when you're looking at, it's trying to make sure that you're, whatever the setback has to be, so let's say, you know, if you have a 45 decimal sound level, and let's say that was 1,800 feet, depending on the turbine model, that was the question you'd be to get to 45. Or maybe, let's say, there's a little bit louder model they chose, maybe you'd have to be 2,000, 2,100 feet. So that whatever that fluctuated number is, the key is that they've got to model to that number at the house. As Rob was telling you, you've got very good, and there's been a lot of work done around the world, that models match out to reality.
Rob, could you just explain why you added two decibels to?
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, so the two decibels is sort of a safety factor, the manufacturers recommend uncertainty. So that's sort of a margin of safety, if you will, that the manufacturer recommends. They have a typical sound level, which is the 104, the 106 I mentioned, but then to be conservative, we add the additional two decibels. The other point on the trade-offs, the older turbines say 400 feet, you've got a GE 1.5, now you've got a GE 3 megawatt, well, you needed two of those GE 1.5 to get to one 3-megawatt machine. So you get the same power now with fewer turbines. So on a net basis, it's not loud.
What about wind direction? If it comes directly at the tower, or I've got an angle, does that make a difference? I mean, some produce?
They are tested under a variety of wind speed and direction conditions. Those are taken into consideration in the sound data the manufacturer provide. And then we take that and put it into the model. Like I said, we assume it's blowing in any different direction. It's unit directional.
So I guess what Rob means by that, if you, if the house is right there in the world center, and let's say all of us are out there with turbines in the project area, why we know the models are actually doing a good job of forecasting, which is why, is because what Rob assumes is that every day, the wind's blowing from all these directions in the sound storm of that house. Clearly, if the wind is blowing from this direction, you'd get the sound from these nice wind turbines right here on that house, but you wouldn't hear the sound coming from your folks.
You would get a greatly reduced.
Yeah, greatly reduced. You'd get some from Rob and me, and some from your folks here. So that's why the model is inherently conservative, they try to make it a worst case. So they, because they, what are they, is they can't underpredict. The reason they can underpredict, is you've got to do post-construction monitoring in New York, right? So they actually, like, let's say the project was approved, and let's say the state, you know, your folks and everybody, all the approvals are there, and then Avangrid builds the project. There's a requirement in New York, which isn't always the case, to actually go up and then they have to test, monitor the sound to make sure that what they modeled is actually correct. And that all has to be followed with the state, and they have to demonstrate compliance. And if they don't, and let's say Rob screws up his modeling. Okay, so Scott pays Rob much money, Rob screws up the modeling, and Scott's not going to be very happy when, if he goes out after and Rob, or somebody measures and finds that they're out of compliance. Because then what has to happen is, turbines have to be called curtailed, so they have to turn down. They have to meet that number, whatever that number's going to be. If it was 45, they have to meet 45. If you don't, they have to curtail. What does that mean to them? That means they don't make as much money. So that's why the models, the models have to line up with the real world. If they don't, tend to be a whole lot of unhappy developers later on, and projects that, quite frankly, and there are projects worldwide. This isn't always perfect. There are projects that have been built that have been out of compliance in the U.S. And they have been, and they have been, not speaking of anyone specifically here right now, but they have been curtailed.
Madison County.
They have been brought down. So, so you do have that extra level protection in New York, which you don't necessarily at all states and all counties, that they are going to have to demonstrate after whatever that sound.
I have a question. If your target had a resident at the base of 45 DPA, you'd be 1,800 to 2,500 feet. What is your DPA at the base of the tower? A ballpark.
If you're standing at the base of the tower? Typically, that's around 60 decibels. Somewhere in that neighborhood, yeah. Plus or minus a few decibels, but it's, yeah.
When you're standing underneath them, you can hear them? No question. Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, you can carry on a normal conversation, you don't have to.
No, I'm just, because I really haven't been brought up yet. That's why I'm just, if you're purging that 45 DPA at the outside of the residence.
And it's a little confusing that I mentioned this 106 as a sound power level.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
But that's why I'm asking you right now, because that would probably, in terms of someone's going to say it's 160.
Yeah.
I'm asking you.
That's a good question. Yeah, around 60. So that's about the conversation of the room right now.
Do you want to moderate first, or? How about you do that, and we'll, I'll be answering any of the questions.
Mr. O'Neill, have you been here before? Did you care a show at House of St.
Yes, I was here for the open house back in March.
Was it your company that set up a sound tester next to Snow Machine Trail?
We did set up some ambient, ambient machines, yes.
Ambient.
The background sound testing.
Snow Machine Trail, right after a big snow, snowfall, right? And right when a monster truck went through it to the area in the morning.
I mean, we, we can't, we can't control what traffic or something goes by.
Yeah, the thing is, the Snow Machine Trail does seem a little, a little, a few.
You're not going to be reporting those.
That's unfair.
Let me, let me answer that, please. So the, as you saw from that graph I showed you before, the sound goes up and down, that, one of the things we have to report is what's called the L90. So the L90 is going to filter out, it's not going to report those, those sharp or those spikes, if you will, of a snowmobile going by, it's going to filter them out. The state's looking for that.
You mean it's going to average it?
That's going to be taken, it's not going to be considered.
It doesn't, it doesn't average, those numbers, the numbers come out, they're not averaged, it's not averaging. What Rob says is that the number comes out, so, and the state looks at that when they're reviewing the annual data, they're not going to just take whatever Rob says, they will be reviewing the data, they'll be looking to make sure.
Then why choose that location? Who takes the number out?
One person at a time.
Mr. Olson, I've seen it before at the county legislature, and I'm wondering why you're using World Health Organization data from 1999, 2009, and when you're talking about sleep disturbance, you're only counting what wakes somebody up? And there's other measurements of people tossing and turning and not being settled. There's a difference. We've all gone through a night where it was very unsettled, though we weren't actually waking up.
Yeah, and in fact, so, try to get to the answers, particularly as I can. Yeah, so the reason that we're using the World Health Organization numbers is that these are very comprehensive reviews that were done over a long period of time with, you know, literally dozens of noise, sleep, and health experts from around the world. And really, as you can see, the matching up to the 1999 number was the Health Canada data, specifically to wind turbines of the 46 decibels. And, sorry, I shouldn't have left you with the impression that we're only looking at sleep disturbance awakening. It's actually, it's much more finer refined than that. So the Health Canada, the Fitbits, the actimeters they were wearing, we were, they actually were reporting not just awakenings, but disturbance. And there's a whole bunch of different metrics by which they're looking at that, you know, the tossing, the turning, all of those things. So, yeah, you're right. It's not just, you don't have to be just woken up abruptly for that to count, it's actually that sub-awakenings. The only reason I was showing the European study was that that just was another metric The only reason I was showing the European study was that that just was another metric that they were looking at, was the total awakenings. So when you look at noise guidelines, and in fact, as you go kind of further back, we've, noise is probably one of the best studied environmental health issues in the area. Studied for, you know, 50, 60 years, we've known for a long period of time that we want to keep that noise low, so that we're not actually having these impacts. So it is much more refined, you're right, that it's not just awakening. And again, if you look at that, I put more stock in the Health Canada study now, plus some of the other studies that have been done as well, there's, there are others out there. Because it's specific to turbines, and it's, and they did a very good sleep study.
And did you consider, did they consider Wolf Island?
They went, Wolf Island was one of the test areas that they were looking at, so they, I don't believe that, if I remember correctly, so Wolf Island, outside of Kingston, just across the way, with a number of turbines, they used it as one of their, their sort of test sites first, before doing the broader study. So they, they did actually do some work there, but it was just a test case to then design the study and to move it out to the other projects.
Yes, I had a quick question. We've discussed a lot about different noise levels using the WHO numbers, looking at the European and the Canadian studies. In the United States, and with your experience, how often are those numbers used or cited by planning boards or other administrative boards in creating their wind laws? Are they leaning more towards numbers, international numbers or NC numbers, or?
It's really all over the map. We're going to tell you, so I'll give you sort of a kind of consistency as we move across the country. 45 tends to be a very common number in a lot of organizations. But if you're in the Midwest, so if you're in South Dakota, North Dakota, if you're in many of those areas there, the number's 50. Almost, almost everywhere, the number's 50. So for example, North Dakota just went through in the Senate and the House, looking at reviewing the wind laws. And they actually settled, 50 is the existing rule, they settled back on 50 when they updated it. They've had one complaint in the last decade to the Public Services Commission from a land order that got then resolved with the company. So in their experience, and what they were basing it on, so they use the 50. Many other counties, jurisdictions out there use that. You have others that will use the 45, and candidly, as we've talked about tonight, Vermont decided to use 39. And so where does it go, very, it really comes down to, and again, charged groups like this board, is what are you comfortable with? What do you, what do you want to do? And so we'll see organizations where, I do a lot of work with various counties on organizations, when it's types, exactly like we're doing here tonight. What is the right number, what is the appropriate number? And ultimately, it is, it's up to the elected officials, and the appointed officials, and, you know, on advice from state and everybody else. So there really isn't a magic number, but I can tell you, there are, you know, lots of projects where 50 is the number. A lot of developers now are going to 45 anyway. Even if, even if the number is 50, they're self-imposing.
Right, and the specific number, we're seeing 45 as kind of being that self-imposed number that people are settling on.
I have a couple of things. I know some, one of your slides said some quote from Dr. Jeff Leventhal. Dr. Jeff Leventhal was hired by a wind company.
What?
He said, "Dr. Jeff Leventhal was paid for by a wind company."
Well, he's an independent consultant out of the UK, yeah? He doesn't, he doesn't work with the wind industry as well as others.
Excuse me. I had personal contact with him, he did a study on wind turbines. And his study concluded that they're useless, that they disturbed everybody's sleep, nobody liked them. And then when, in 2005, when they were hired by JP Morgan, he changed all the results of his studies. I went down to the office, and it was after Nina's book had come out, and Mark Lyons, project director, said, "Ann, let me show you an email I got from Jeff Leventhal." So, you know, they travel with their laptops, go behind his desk, opens it up, opens up the email, it says, "As a paid consultant from Noble Environmental Power, I, Dr. Jeff Leventhal, have to say..." And I walked out. Marks was, "Well, wait. Wait for what? He's paid for. Whatever's in that paper was paid for him to say it."
Well, okay, so Jeff's not here, but give me a second, I'm going to try to respond a little bit to.
He, I'm not done.
All right.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, so JP Morgan printed something in our local paper about me saying something about Jeff Leventhal. And after my visit there, Jeff Leventhal actually did a letter to the editor of our local newspaper, apologizing to me. So, he's not a good example for you to have up there, because he's unpaid, he's unpaid to say that.
May I respond?
Now.
Let me, let me respond. Come on, fairness, let me respond. So I know Jeff very well. Jeff, Dr. Leventhal, very well respected, international acquisition. He's appeared in front of a number of tribunals and hearings here in North America, so I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I can't speak specifically to what you're saying there, but I can tell you that.
I can't.
Dr. Leventhal is a very well-respected international specialist.
I can also tell you that he's really not respected by Audubon in the United States.
We'll have to agree to disagree on that.
Um, this, um.
We've got other people on talking, please.
We have a lot to do tonight.
They had a lot of time, okay? They're public, I'm public, we get equal time. I just have a few statements.
They're paid by the wind company.
Okay. These are peer reviews, okay? You say there's no peer reviews. They're from Harvard, they're from Don Hoffman, that's Nina's book. And I am, I am a representative for Nina.
I didn't say that there were no peer reviews, but I said it was self-published. That's, that's not, I did not say that she did.
It is peer reviewed.
I recognize that Dr. Leventhal had called it.
And the doctor, the doctor next to her that you had on the slide, just came out with a journal article about a week ago. She did discover vibroacoustic disease.
We're going to have to agree on this.
And she, she is in medical journals, and she recently published, she's recently published.
So she.
And we worked with her when we were researching for this book.
So what I would suggest to you is that Dr. Elvis Peres' work is reviewed on a number of occasions by a number of tribunals, a number of courts, a number of medical agencies, and outside of per, one group of collaborators, vibroacoustic disease is not listed by any medical organization in the world, it is not something.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
It's not.
It is, we've seen it many times.
Okay.
And here's, you always cut me short, Fred, you never let me have time.
I think I gave you plenty of time.
You're doing personal attacks.
This is a new science.
This is new stuff.
Ann, you're not, you're not giving the point, you're doing personal attacks on someone that's not here, please. Go ahead.
So in reference to self-reported complaints impact, these studies aren't going to give you accurate account of the impact on the community due to the gag order sections of the lease agreements, good neighbor agreements, and pilot agreements. Olson admitted before the tribunal, that he was taking one course in epidemiology and one lecture in acoustics while being used as an expert witness in the Gun Hill appeal. He's not a health provider or licensed by any health professional regulating body. And your testimony at hearings has come into question, I've seen many of them, I've read all of them.
So in fact, it has not, and in every one of the hearings that I have provided testimony in, I've been certified as an expert specializing in environmental health and wind turbines, every single one of them.
Not acoustic.
I'm not an acoustician.
So what are you talking about sound for?
Because, sound is an environmental contaminant.
I'm aware.
So, and I deal with, and what I'm schooled, trained, and you pulling something off wind concerns Ontario, or Ontario wind resistance.
No. File documents.
The hearing and the record actually says, based on, in part, with the Gun Hill testimony, that project was approved, in part based on the testimony that I've provided.
Lies. Yeah, that's great.
Well, so you're asking where the qualifications come from.
You're providing support for them in our town. You see what I'm saying? Like, they're listening to you. Our expert talked, and they weren't even looking at him. No one asked questions on this board when our expert talked. And he was free.
Yes, we did.
You did, you did. The rest of them didn't. So, but he, he was free. I mean, how much of the vote are you getting paid to do this project?
So I'm a professional.
Our money.
Our money.
Quit to answering with those long sentences, you've run out of time. Just tell us how much you're being paid.
I'm an expert in the field of what I do. Obviously.
I don't care what you do, I don't do up on mine, I know what you do.
This is going south now.
But I, I get paid to do.
It is, because they're being used, it's going south.
I get paid to do a professional job, to do my thing. And where I would suggest, again, if you look at every one of those tribunals or hearings, all which I've provided to this board in a CD, I'm certified as an independent expert in the field.
You're not.
You're paid actually.
You're not.
Not independent, sir.
Glory in the back.
You're not educated.
You guys are going to stand up?
Okay, you both like to say that there's, there's no problem with noise or anything like that. Can either of you explain the phenomenon?
I can't hear you, sorry.
Can either of you explain why at times it is louder, the noise from the turbines is louder inside people's homes than outside? When you say it's, it's going to be less? Well, we have people that have come from Shadow Gate and testified here in front of a bunch of different groups, that it's happened to him. And actually, a member of the Hoffman and Wind Advisory Board went to his house, and he told me, "Oh my gosh, it's louder in Kevin's house than it is outside." That's what we're concerned about. I have more questions, but I'll let you answer that one.
Obviously, I can't respond to Shadow Gate, I haven't been there, I don't know the house. What I have found in my personal testing, when I have gone and tested, is it is not louder inside versus outside.
Can I give you his address then? Do you want to go over there?
On the night?
He's moved.
Oh. Because he couldn't stay and live in there anymore. Okay, so here's the next question that I have. The, the World Health Organization data that you're talking about is nearly 20 years old. Do you agree or disagree that the turbines have changed significantly in the last 20 years, and that the World Health Organization data is outdated?
Okay, so I'll try to unpack that a little bit. So the, although it is in some cases 20 to, you know, 10 to 20 years old, right? Again, as I was saying, noise has been studied, and environmental noise, whether it's from L trains, whether it's from highway traffic, airports, and that, it is an extremely well-studied science. And in fact, both of those World Health Organization documents didn't review wind turbine noise at all. So those numbers have stood up over the test of time, every time, and, you know, people still collect data on airports, on roads, on all of these things, and now we've got the data from wind turbines. Now, for about the last 20 years, we now have studies and reports on wind turbines. And so when you match up, for example, again, the Health Canada data that I was talking about, up to 46 decimals, some of the other work that's been done by others, up to 45 decimals, they actually line up and match up nicely. If you look at those, so I would suggest that the World Health Organization numbers are still as relevant today as they were when they were first published. And although we continue to collect new noise sources, we collect more data, there have been more research done, it does stand up to the test of time.
Okay, my next question is, you don't take into account that not everyone sleeps at night. There are shift workers, there are nurses, there are other professionals that have to sleep during the day. And you're by your own admission saying that it, it should be lower at night in order to make sure people get their sleep. So that, I just want to bring that up, I want to say, in the Midwest, in Texas, you're talking farms that are thousands of acres, you're not talking little bitty farms like there are here. The population areas are much, much more sparsely populated. You can't compare this rural area here to Texas or to the Midwest. And I, I still got another question.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we, can we just? Touch for one second on that? So you're right, there are, there are lots of bigger parcels in states like Texas. But what is surprising to me is I've done a lot of work out there in some of these bigger midwestern states, is there are still smaller residential parcels that are, that are near wind turbines, near meaning similar types of setbacks, that are carved out of these larger parcels. So you still have some of the same types of, of situations going on even out there.
Okay, my last question, I promised.
Just very quickly, though, on the nurses and the shift workers, absolutely right, I mean, not every sleeps at night, but again, the ambient sound level during the day tends to be a lot higher than it does at night. And if you have 45 at night, which is keeping everybody asleep, 45 during the day, well, will do the same.
I believe we're going for 35 at night, but.
Yeah, sorry.
My last question is, if 45 to 50 is supposed to be everybody's hunky-dory, can you tell me why the internet is flooded, and I mean flooded, with complaints? And it's right in our own area. I mean, it's, it's right next door to us, and it's, it's to the south of us. I mean, come on. If it didn't bother people, they aren't going to waste time complaining, they're not going to abandon their homes, they're not going to take less than their property value just to get away. I mean, let's, let's be honest here. There are definite impacts.
So where, so where I would start with that is that, as I said earlier in the presentation, not every wind project was designed properly in the past. Are there, are there wind projects that are too close to people's homes, that are too loud, that are out of compliance? I know that there are. Okay, so I'm not, so I don't, so, give me a second, okay? So I'm not standing here saying, "Go ahead and do it every one." Right, that's not what we're saying. I'm saying, if you look at the science and that, I'm not going to speak to the property value thing, that's not my area of expertise or where I should be speaking of. But in terms of, you know, the, when you say flooded with complaints, again, there's 50,000 turbines up in the US, vast majority in rural areas. And when I say rural, exactly communities just like yours here, population density. If you look all over, when I said Midwest, you can go to Indiana, you can go to Illinois, like many other places just similar to this, where again, so, am I saying that everybody's going to enjoy having one nearby next door to them? No, they may not. Okay, so when you're setting public health design goals, it's looking at the data, looking at the science. Again, there are, there are people, and you know who they are, you read them on the internet, and you completely disagree with me. So I, and, but there are, the vast majority of the jurisdictions are citing similar to what we're discussing here.
But I believe Shadow Gate is 45.
I did, I don't know, I don't.
But 45 DDA, doesn't matter what the wind company is, if the decimal level correct, it doesn't matter.
That's right, that's right, that's right. Yeah, no, it's, it's the turbine.
45 DDA is 45 DDA. If there's widespread complaints, at 45 DDA in Shadow Gate.
I, I can only not speak to Shadow Gate, because I, I don't, like, I've heard of it, when I've been in your community, but I, I don't know how widespread.
And you've been pushing sort of the house, not property line. What if somebody wants to add on to their house?
Ann, please.
What if somebody wants to add on?
Can we not speak out of turn, Lee, we're asking one person at a time.
Everybody else gets to talk.
Just want to reiterate a point that you made. You guys are paid to do your studies and do your reports by Iberdola. Anyone who's taken even a simple elementary statistics class knows that when you look at, look at statistics, there's different angles you can report on. So you guys are, are paid to report on the angle that is going to look the best for the wind company. And a case in point is, until Luke brought up, that you only mentioned sleep disturbances for people who reported, you didn't even mention it. There are tons of studies that had nothing to do with turbines. There are across Europe, across, across the world, that show that sleep disturbance does not mean, does not necessarily mean a person is even aware that they are disturbed. And that's what's happening with these turbines, correlating it with another study, that because of the sound with the wishing, how it's not rhythmic, it's not natural with your body, it's disturbing. The infrasound is disturbing, but not enough for people to always become wakeful. So why didn't you talk on those studies? Why did you only present the studies that were going to give it, give Iberdola the better life?
So as I was explaining to the board, and you saw the studies that I was putting up, I'm not manipulating any statistics, yes, there's statistics that are standardized, right? I mean, there's all the things you can do to these. But what I was putting up was the Health Canada data, what are their studies, their reports. What I was putting up was the German state study. So in order, you know, I could pick a whole bunch of other studies and put them up there on various sites, but what I was trying to show to the board was, here are these studies that government-sponsored, government-run, government-scientists doing them. And so that's where, you know, not just cherry-picking from various studies. And there are many other...
So when you, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I know what I was trying to do, you guys answered. You mentioned Germany, but why didn't you also mention that Germany has a 35 DVA limit? Limit? Or 10 times as high?
They don't. Germany does not have a 35 decimal limit. There are, Germany's done by state and by local jurisdiction, and depending on where you are in Germany and where the, you know, for example, the discussion of 10 times turbine height back, that is actually from town in one area of one state. So the German standards vary from 35 up to 45. It depends on where you are.
But the way you presented it, you didn't admit that there's some 35.
Yes, there, no, but we talked about that, there are jurisdictions that have 35.
And lastly, you mentioned that there's 45 around. There's a town already who has a 35 in this county, 35 DVA at night. Several other towns in New York, some Iberdola is working with right now or in the Article 10 process, are going for much lower than 45. So that, again, is a little bit skewed data, seeing that everything or most of them are going for 45, when things right here in St. Lawrence County and our neighborhood, Jefferson County, are 35.
Sorry, what I was suggesting was that the developers, the projects that I'm aware of in New York that are under development in the Article 10 process, the developers propose a 45. I'm well aware that there are, again, as I was saying to the board earlier, it is a board decision. We talked about the standards range from 35 up to 50. And that's where the challenge is, is for the elected officials, for the government people to help set those numbers. I was just merely presenting to the board what I think that number should be. It certainly, it's, you're appointed in elected officials to make that decision. Debbie and Mac, please.
I just wanted to ask, are either of you associated with any university?
Yes, I hold adjunct professorship at the University of Toronto. I teach a graduate-level course in environmental health every year there, and co-supervise PhD and master's students. I also hold an adjunct professorship at the Royal National Ecology Canada.
And do you have any research papers you've done yourself?
Yes, the first part of my presentation there, I put up the six peer-read publications that I and colleagues have done on this issue specifically.
And who is it funding the grant aid research, or was it funded by corporations?
So all of that work that I put up there, it was actually, as a consultant, what I had done was taken part of the bees out, so it wasn't any one specific company that was paying, it was just part of the overall being in the industry working. So it was self-funded essentially. But candidly, the funds really, you know, in orbit, self-funded, the funds came from working both for wind industry as well as, again, state and local government officials as well that have worked with it, so it's not just...
A quick one, though. If the decimal count is over 35 or 45, whatever, if they go over that, not this 10% limbo they let them off on, they should be fined immediately when they break that decimal count, because that's our contract. I understand they weasel in and get a 10%. 10% of what, over a year, a day, an hour?
I don't know, 10%.
L-NAC.
If you're set at 35 or 45 and it comes in at 37, they should be fined at that point or over the decimal level.
Margin of error that he referred to? Margin of error.
Okay. Another thing, nobody's mentioned the strobe lights and the nights and the bat kills. When do most bat birds migrate? Do you guys know?
Sorry, I've got a, I'm not a bird guy.
You're building towers to kill them and you're an environmentalist?
No, come on.
No, my expertise isn't out, there are others that specialize on the bird bat side, I just don't.
Garnet.
If you go to the scenario, if you will, and I'd like to show a hand, and from the presenter's too. I bought this country lot, five acres, in the country of, far and all around me, that's part of the deal. I grew the corn chopper going all around here, I live in the city and the country, I have no home. I'm sitting on my back porch, it's beautiful, I see the stars every night, no problem. Now I got 50 windmills, strobe lights going, blades are turning, sitting on my back porch, my $200,000 home and my five acres, which isn't big enough to hold a windmill, is now worth $100,000. How many of you folks want that? How many you want to be, how many folks want to be in that situation without compensation to that landlord? I don't want to be there. Does anybody else want to be there?
No.
No.
And you wouldn't get $100,000.
I'd like 30.
I wonder what you say to people who have tried to abandon their homes because of the 35.
So I have certainly...
Their lives are, and their families, their homes are gone, and they're like starting over.
So I've certainly spoken to a number of individuals over the 10 years or so doing this. What I say to them first and foremost is that this issue goes and seek to position on advice. I can't speak to the, every individual, again, there are projects that are located to people's homes, and those I don't support.
And where are the turbines at?
And so, and what I'm saying is that I believe that at 45 decibels of setbacks we're talking about here, is that you're not going to have that issue without an opinion.
It's too late now.
That's more like 10 minutes out of every hour.
Luke, go ahead.
What I'd like to know is, when will we get to see this wind model layout? Now, so far, we haven't seen anything like that, and we're worried about, you know, setbacks and health issues, and you guys seem to know where, how that's going to work out, how come we haven't seen a map yet?
Scott, do you want to talk about where you are in the Article 10 process?
I just think that...
What was that, the open house?
No.
No, we have not. You know, out of the Article 10 process, we will do that. And Rob, you actually talked about that process as well. Right, so some of the slides I put up there, mine, part of the thought, when they submit their application for the project, that opens the public conference, that's when you see all the details of the model.
Those will be in the PSS.
Results, the results will be in there.
There's still a long ways to go, all right.
Those will be in the PSS.
I just wanted to make a comment about, the gentleman keep referencing government-sponsored studies. And right here in New York, for example, there are multiple documents that New York State, NISERTA, uses as the, the quote, the information to, for the public, and information about wind development. Those documents are always prepared by industry consultants, just like these gentlemen. So I want to know if Avangrid owns or uses, for example, in New York, AWS TrueWind is the company that does a lot of the documents for New York. Does Avangrid use AWS software products, or do they have a paid consulting relationship with them?
You're looking at Rob, who's our sound consultant.
We don't use AWS TrueWind products for any of the work that we do.
Does Avangrid?
This is our sound expert.
I'm asking if Avangrid uses any software products or has a paid consulting relationship with AWS.
We have used AWS, absolutely.
Okay, so AWS prepared the documents for New York State on wind development.
Which documents? Can you email?
Okay.
I'm not fighting with you, I just want to clarify which ones you have.
Just for example, the, there's a 2016 Clean Energy Standard White Paper. There's also a 2009 Wind Energy Toolkit prepared by AWS for NISERTA. And it's described as the Wind Energy Toolkit Resource for Communities Preparing for Possible Wind Development. So these gentlemen are referring to government-sponsored studies, yet New York is a perfect example of how those studies are conducted.
But I would, what I would suggest to you, the studies that we were talking about today, what I can tell you from New York right now, from the state officials at Department of Health and DPS, what we've been asked to look at, from those in writing, the Department of Health has asked us to look at the World Health Organization document, 40 and 45. They've also, there's also another document, the Neighborhood Document, which is the, what does that stand for again? But it's a, it's a utilities document.
Utilities document.
That was, that was not prepared by AWS, again, that has other numbers that they're suggesting.
But you're referencing in your, you listed in multiple slides references to government-sponsored studies.
Right, but what I'm saying...
And I'm asking, all that you listed there, aren't they company, aren't some of those studies prepared by companies just like yours?
No, so, to clarify, again, the Health Canada study that spent a lot of time on, that was all government scientists and researchers, and as well as academics, and nobody with an association with the wind industry. The German study, again, was, you know, conducted and overseen by German state officials. There are some of the, you know, the other one that I put up with the Pedersen Backer paper, those are the university researchers. There are some of the studies that I put up that I authored, yes.
You authored, and you just said that you, you used, you used grant money from wind developers to do your studies.
What I said is that I self-funded them and I'm a paid consultant at both for the wind developers as well as, again, for the state, for other agencies as well.
And the other studies are created in the same way, is my, that's my point.
But they're not.
And you don't keep up to date. Germany's not doing wind, they said, no more.
Anne, please, Anne. One guy in the back, touch him.
Oh, I just wanted, I can see my neighbors in the audience, and there's a way to relate to some of the things that have been going on. So they didn't mention amplitude. So you talked about frequency, you didn't mention amplitude. So amplitude, like, say for instance, you know, you guys, everybody's got a car, right? You don't, raise your hand. Okay, so anyway, if you've got a car, right, how many of you have experienced an out-of-balance tire? Probably most of you, right? So if you, you know, you've got an out-of-balance tire, you know, there's, even the frequency is around 60, you don't hear it at all, do you? No, but you do feel it, don't you? Now, let's say that you had two tires that are out of balance, one, the amplitude increase? Okay, so if we got one windmill, right, you can keep the decimal low, you may not even hear anything at all, but amplitude will increase as you have more of the wind going on. So it's great that these guys, everything that they said is probably right, and, you know, I support them in that, you mean, I've done studies before too. And there's things that they're mentioning, which is the statistics, and, which is that you can make statistics say anything you want. Here's an example of statistics, which you can look at as a joke, is, and I'm not going to really pick on this particular car brand, but we use cars, yeah? And, you know, Yugo's, right? You know, 97% of Yugos are still on road, and the other 3% made it home. To your advantage, which they did really well.
Imagine the noise of those shredded blades in Shattagay.
I've lived in Ellingberg for 30 years, and when this first started talking about getting the power of Ellingberg, I've been to at least a dozen of these town meetings, and they're all the same. And not, and against you, you've got a job to do, and you're doing it. But it's the same thing, and it's the same, I'm not going to call them lies, but I'll call them stories. And I never had a headache in my life until the windmills came to Ellingberg. I'm leaving my home for 30 years because of these darn things, and they tear the communities apart. I didn't want a windmill, and because I wouldn't put them on my land, he's not my friend no more. And that was just me. And I know at least a dozen other instances, just about a little town of Ellingberg. I offered to fly our town board members to Wisconsin to check out some windmills out there, we didn't have them yet. They refused. The town of Altona, I offered to fly to Wisconsin to check out the problems that they had out there. Nobody took it up. We have windmills in both of my towns, a lot of them. Just, guys, do your homework. Do your homework, because...
That's, that's exactly what we're trying to do. And the changes, we serve our local law up to the county, and we do better. So we'd like to continue in the meeting, we've got a lot to do. Here's the status.
But here's someone with experience.
You know, it's not, I'm not talking about data, I'm not talking about manipulation of anything, I'm talking about me, I'm talking about my town, that I raised my daughter.
And it'll be us.
We would like to thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we've got to move on here, okay? We've got to run a meeting, here's what we're trying to do. We got some information from the county planning office, and they've given us some criteria that we either have to meet or the town has to, we either have to make the changes to our local law, or the town has to, has to pass the law with a supermajority. So we'd like to go through these, and we'd like to make these changes to the law so we can move along with it. Now, the town will have another public hearing tomorrow at the, we're at it, it's at 6:00 tomorrow? That'll be the town board's public hearing, okay? And then they plan another one in the near future, probably going next week? I don't know, in two weeks or so?
No, actually, it'll be following...
Following?
Next week.
Okay. All right, and that'll be a special being by the town board on the wing law. If you guys don't mind, we're going to move along with our meeting now. All right.
We have to...
There's 25 copies of the county recommendation.
Okay, then, if you guys would like, you could pick up the copies of the recommendation, and I won't have to go through them word by word, because you've all looked at them, and we could just blanket accept them or reject them or discuss them, or turn them out. That would move things along nicely, save me a lot of talking. What we need to do is review the minutes of our main three at the end.
I guess I'll have to make a motion.
Now, we're going to go to review. First item. We added this clause, this clause which is often addressed with private gain and affecting any aspect of this law, except as opposed by this law. We've been asked to remove that by our terms. According to the statute, both statutes accusing a dogged, leery, and forceful, and its attempts to void the system of contact between private parties, even when they are consistent with your local law, is a legal bucket of snakes. Recommendation, remove that. I absolutely agree. On definitions, the book that we refer to in our town code and in this local law has been updated. Now called, a planner's dictionary rather than glossary is only developed in planning terms, and so we, I'm taking out that glossary, it's only developed in planning terms, and adding a planning dictionary. And the report numbers change from 491, 492 to 521, 522, okay? And that's been, I asked two attorneys in the county planning office about that, and they agreed. And then we've got a couple typos. On page 12, section 2.02S, we're taking out when in the opinion, other than what we're taking out when in the opinion, and in its option, which in its option I said yet. So we leave this whole thing, yeah, no, you're on it. And that's for our two attorney. Those are the only three changes from there. All right. Good. Now, going down to the project review report from St. Lawrence County Planning Board, this is formally reviewed by the board, you guys have all seen this, they made some recommendations, they made some conditions. These are reviewed by the town attorney, by the town, Mr. Cohen, who is an expert behind it, and by Dr. Limbitt, and the other members, any of them. They, they say that they're all reasonable, matter of fact. I think they can read that, if you want to. The conditions of county approval are primarily on small webs and Aaron Volker standards. We recommend we incorporate them in final draft for a vote. And we should agree to amend the draft amendment and incorporate them into the final law, and then send these on to the public hearings. Now, I, I know you've all seen this, we talked about it, I did make adjustments to the law if you guys read them. The only two we got, that, I didn't follow their recommendations on, on page 12, the planning board waiver, is what I just discussed. They said, "The current language is not stressed by the planning board and waiver dimension requirement." Well, the waiver wasn't set up at that. All the waiver we talked about was for applications on this home, it had nothing to do with anything, any setbacks or things, so I left that in. That's the only recommendation we got. The other one they asked us, they're asking if they need some five copies, they want us to send, the opt- there are 10 copies and one digital copy. I don't know if you guys want each one a paper copy, I mean, we'll do a sample, or we'll, yeah, one for the while, so I'll take four off, and that's opt- two digital. So, I'll take four off, and ask them to pay me two digital copies. Uh, one digital, basically.
Yeah, one digital, you can pass away.
I mean, I just, I'm going to, definitely, very, definitely, yeah.
You're just, you know, you're just trying to, but, I'm going to, I'm going to, I've got to save the paper and this for a second.
Yeah. All right, so, if you want to change that to, uh, instead of common copies, we'll ask for, uh, six copies, okay? Good. Now, next thing, about these conditions, should we go through them all or do you guys all, you've all seen them, right? You've got it back there, you guys have a problem with this, except we're not reading every one of them?
I think you should go through them because not everybody has seen them at a time.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to go fast then. On page six, um, they want us to add a sentence, they, they moved that sentence. Where, where are you? Page six, uh-
On the planning thing.
Permit required for small wex, items F and G. Yeah. These, these regulations have to follow the department's agriculture markets, and pretty much all the county wants us to do is, is, uh, to keep referring back to that, to the department agriculture markets. And item G, which should be changed to read, no permit or other approval shall be required under this local law for wex that are for agricultural operations. All right? The next one's on page 10, uh, decommissioning plan, number six. We should revise it to read, a description for how the applicant will comply with the department of agriculture market decommissioning and restoration requirements for the wex and associated utility lines on farmland. On page 10, under notice of construction installation, item three, we should write to, revise to read, a plan for public notice to school districts official account. And then we're at, and county officials. Number 11-5, they're, they're concerned about property value analysis, very complicated. This is page 11, it's actually, they, they, um, they have a decimal in there somewhere here. Whether this requirement should, yeah, should be maintained, should be carefully laid by the town, because its property value analysis is very complicated. So, it is very complicated, and we're going to leave it as is, because, uh, it's complicated. It's complicated, I trust. Page 11, electromagnetic interference, set out number six, they want us to revise it to read, an assessment of potential electromagnetic interference with microwave, radio, television, personal, and then they want us to add this, official or emergency communication systems. So, they want us to add afterwards official or emergency in that, in that, there again. There's the big, page 12. Have you read this?
Yeah.
All right. Under, they want us to add, the number 11, which I get, farmland, inventory of farmland that consists of prime soils and received agriculture evaluations, an assessment of impact to affected farmland, and a description of how the project will comply with department of agriculture markets construction, decommissioning and restoration requirements for wex and associated utility lines in farmland. On page 12, again, we'll go back to that, planning board waiver, they want us, uh, to add this sentence stating whether the, or not the planning board issuance of waivers applies dimension requirements, that is what I just talked about before, and that waiver has only to deal with application requirement, has nothing to do with dimension requirements at all. Page 12, number of applications, we talked about that, we want to change that to, uh, six, paper copies and the one digital copy. Page 14, uh, lighting towers. The, uh, we, we did revise it to, uh, as far as the strobe lights, that they, they can be only activated by, uh, porting aircraft. This doesn't like do that, this was about the security lighting. It says, minimum security lighting that is downcast and dark sky compliant for ground level facilities shall be allowed as approved on the site name. There again, undermine it. This one here, uh, on page 14, item E, uh, there's no practical guidance specified about appropriate measures to reduce the visual impact of the wex. Now, they wanted us to add, the system's tower and blaze shall be painted a non-reflective, unobtrusive color that blends the system and its components into the surrounding landscape to the greatest extent possible, and incorporate non-reflective surfaces to minimize any visual disruption.
There are FAA requirements.
That's right.
That are different than that, aren't, aren't they?
They, they specify the color that power has to be, and, and by the FAA, the federal government sets it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we put it anyhow.
But they also have the color on their, yeah.
Yeah. However, I, I read that over a couple times and I realized that, because we can't put restrictions on the, uh, agricultural wind towers, wind towers that are used for agricultural purposes.
Yeah.
Um, if you put that in there, we can keep, you know, a farmer can put up a lime green or a orange tower, or a toilet on the cockers. Yeah, right. Okay. There again, on page 14, item H, we didn't have a reference to avoid interference with official or emergency communication towers, and, uh, we talked about adding that, for the official or emergency communication. Uh, going to page 15, item J. 15, item J. Uh, they want us to revise the last sentence on item J, all tops of disturbed during construction, reconstruction, or modification of a wex shall be stopped, filed, returned, and I'm going to add that, re-gate, regraded, and reseated, complication of the activity. In other words, adding the words regard, regraded, and reseeded. On the, uh, page 15, item O, they want us to add, uh, where we have, uh, our definition, we didn't have the definition total height of, of the tower, they want us to add, to reword this, the maximum total height of any wex shall not exceed 500 feet as measured, and this is what we're adding, from the grade of the site that existed prior to construction, unquote, at the base of the wex, the uppermost top of the grade. Now, they have a tissue on page 17 with our noise standards, but they didn't give us any recommendation, so, we're leaving that as is, I guess, unless you guys can do that. Um, on page 18, they made the recommendation on the wex setbacks, item E.